Go ahead Chad.
All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the Monday, May 10th, 2021, City of Blue Springs Planning Commission Meeting to order. At this time, I'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like now to ask Karen Pendora, Commission Liaison, to call the roll.
Planning Commissioner Byron Cradoff?
Planning Commissioner Cradoff, present.
Commissioner Laquisha Veal is absent. Commissioner Ashley Hose is absent. Commissioner Jacob Honeycutt? Commissioner Lynn Banks?
Commissioner Lynn Banks, present.
Commissioner Ken Phillips?
Commissioner Ken Phillips, present.
Commissioner Jacob Honeycutt?
Commissioner Honeycutt, here.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel?
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, here.
Commissioner Travis Graham?
Commissioner Travis Graham, present.
Commissioner Susan Stokenberry?
Commissioner Susan Stokenberry, present.
Commissioner Tom Rohr?
Tom Rohr, present.
And Chair Chad Sanderson.
Chair Chad Sanderson is here. All right. We have a few public hearings tonight, so I'm going to go through the public hearing procedures, and then we'll walk through the agenda items. For the public hearing, we will open the public hearing, call for exhibits from the city attorney, we'll ask for the staff presentation, we'll have the applicant make a presentation if they would like to do so, we'll then call for witnesses in favor, and then witnesses opposed, have some questions, general discussion, and then we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion. We've got two items for Whataburger and one item for Adams Point, as well as election offices on the agenda. So item one is the consent agenda. Item two is the public hearing, VAC 0421-7742 for Whataburger. Item three is a final plat for Blazer Center, second plat, a replat of Lot A, Blazer Center for Whataburger. Item four is amended plan residential overlay, final plan, PROF 0421-7732 Adams Point Village. Item five is election of officers. Item six is other business, and seven is adjournment. At this time, I would, the first item on the agenda is the consent agenda for the meeting minutes for April 26, 2021, and I'll be looking for a motion, and I'll recognize Commissioner Peel.
Thank you Chair. I move that the meeting minutes from the April 26 meeting of the Planning Commission be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you Commissioner Peel, and I'll recognize Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner Ken Phillips, I second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and this will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Cradoff?
Commissioner Cradoff, aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Commissioner Honeycutt, aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Phillips? Commissioner Phillips?
Commissioner Phillips, aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Commissioner Stokenberry, aye.
Commissioner Rohr?
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
And Chair Sanderson.
Chair Sanderson, aye.
And the motion is carried unanimously.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is items two and three, the vacation VAC 0421-7742, and the final plat PF 0421-7743 for Whataburger. I'll now open the public hearing for the vacation and call for exhibits from our city attorney, Jackie Summer.
Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Exhibit two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on April 24, 2021. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV Land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And eight, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference.
Thank you. And Mr. Wright, I believe you're presenting for the city on this application?
Yep, thank you Chair Sanderson and Commissioners. Before this evening, I request for the vacation of a utility easement and a final plat for Whataburger, which is proposed to be located at 905 Northwest 7 Highway, which is at the northwest corner of 7 Highway and Northwest South Outer Road. The first request before you this evening is for the vacation of a platted 10-foot utility easement, which is located in the south-central portion of Lot A, Blazer Center first plat, as shown on the final plat that is on the screen. This easement was platted as part of a previous subdivision, which was later replatted in 1987 to accommodate the Winstead site. At that time, it wasn't vacated, as the easement didn't interfere with the building layout for the site. However, Whataburger's approved site plan does have a small encroachment of the proposed building within that utility easement, which is the primary reason for the vacation request this evening. All utilities have consented to the vacation request, and any existing utilities can be accommodated either in the right-of-way along 7 Highway or South Outer Road, as well as the existing utility easements to the north and the additional water easement that is proposed to be platted with the final plat. The second request is for the final plat, which is on the screen, which is a replat of Lot A, Blazer Center first plat, and this will retain the same Lot A, only it's being replatted as Blazer Center second plat, to distinguish that. The replat covers the 1.1-acre site, and the primary changes from the original plat is the additional dedication of right-of-way along 7 Highway and Northwest South Outer Road, which is shown in the hatched area near the intersection, as well as the additional sidewalks, as well as the water easement that I previously mentioned. The final plat is in substantial compliance with the previously approved preliminary plat. All required public improvements, including the sidewalks along the perimeter of the site, as well as the extension of the median along 7 Highway, are required to be installed prior to occupancy of the Whataburger restaurant. Staff does recommend approval of the vacation request with two conditions and the final plat with three conditions, and I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Are there any questions by the Commissioners at this time for the staff? Okay. Seeing none, I would turn it over to the applicant if they would like to make a presentation or any additional comments. You will need to be sworn in and then give your name and address.
Sir, raise your right hand. Do you saw me swear? The testimony you're about to give in this case will be the truth, have you God?
Yes.
Need your name and address.
This is Kevin Drosen with MS Consultants. Our address is 300 Corporate Center Drive, Suite 200, in Moon Township, Pennsylvania, 15108. I'm representing Whataburger for this project, and I have nothing else to add from what Matt presented, so thank you, Matt, for very thorough presentation.
All right.
We also, I just want to add too, sorry, we also have Kenneth from Young &amp; Hobbs and Surveyors, if there's any specific questions for the plat.
Okay, excellent. So any Commissioners, any questions for the applicant at this time? Okay. Doesn't look like that, Mr. Drosen, so I think you're good at this time unless we come up with something else. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would now ask for witnesses in favor of this application.
We do not have any speaker forms, Chair.
Okay. And I would ask for witnesses in opposition. Okay. Bring it back up for any additional questions or discussion by the Commissioners. Commissioner Peel?
Yes, thank you Chair. I was interested, are we voting on both of these at the same time, or are we separating them with the vacation first and then the final plat after?
It'll be a separate vote, a separate motion and separate vote, yes.
All right, thank you Chair.
You're welcome. Any other questions from the Commissioners or any other comments before we close the public hearing? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing, and I would ask for a motion on the vacation. Commissioner Peel?
Yes, thank you Chair. I would like to make a motion on vacation VAC 0421-7742 with the two conditions for Whataburger be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you Commissioner Peel. We have a motion, and I'll now recognize Commissioner Honeycutt.
I will second that motion.
All right, thank you Commissioner Honeycutt. We have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Banks?
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Commissioner Phillips, aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Commissioner Stokenberry, aye.
Commissioner Rohr?
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Commissioner Cradoff, aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Commissioner Honeycutt, aye.
One more time, Commissioner Banks?
I'm sorry Karen, I think I said aye.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that. And thank you. And Chair Sanderson?
Chair Sanderson, aye.
Okay, that motion is carried unanimously.
All right, thank you. That vacation will be heard by the city council at their Monday, May 17th, 2021, meeting at 6:00 PM. I would now ask for a motion on the final plat. Commissioner Banks?
Thank you, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve the final plat PF-04-21-7743, Blazer Center, second plat, a replat of Lot A, Blazer Center for Whataburger, with the three staff conditions.
Thank you Commissioner Banks. We have a motion, and I'll now recognize Commissioner Peel.
Yes, thank you Chair. I second the motion that was made by Commissioner Banks.
All right, thank you Commissioner Peel. We have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Ken Phillips?
Commissioner Phillips, aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Commissioner Stokenberry, aye.
Commissioner Rohr?
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Commissioner Cradoff, aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Commissioner Honeycutt, aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Chair Sanderson?
Chair Sanderson, aye.
That motion is carried unanimously.
All right. Final plat will be heard by the city council at their Monday, May 17th, 2021, meeting at 6:00 PM. So this is all the testimony heard on these items, so if you'd like to leave the meeting, please do so now. Thank you so much.
Chad, this is Kevin Drosen again with MS. Just a question. I was not able to find an agenda, so the conditions that were stated, I don't know if I missed an email that came through, or I could not find it on the website, but just, please be sure to pass that on to us.
Yes sir, I will go ahead and send that to you right now Kevin, okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. The next item on the agenda is item four, the amended PRO final plan, PROF 0421-7732 Adams Point Village. And Mr. Wright, I believe you're presenting again.
Yep, thank you Chair Sanderson and Commissioners. Before this evening is an amended PRO final plan for Adams Point Village, which is a single-family subdivision located east of Adams Point Golf Course and south of northeast Darty Mice Road. The subdivision is owned SF7 PRO, which is a single-family residential with a planned residential overlay, and was originally approved in 2005. A PRO final plan covering the entire development was approved in 2016, which covered 38.17 acres. The purpose of the PRO amendment this evening is related to some changes in open space and the reduction of a couple of lots to accommodate the open space, and most of these are as a result of the natural features and topography, particularly along the perimeter of the development, in which the applicant is proposing to try to preserve in its existing condition to the extent possible. There was an amended concept plan that came before the planning commission and city council last fall, which decreased the amount of open space from 5.86 acres to 5.58 acres, so roughly a quarter acre reduction. This proposed modification actually increases that total open space back up to 6.88 acres, which increases the total site from 14.6% to 17.34%, more than double the 8% that's required. This increase is predominantly, or is entirely, interacts E and F, which are on the east boundary of the property. The main reason for that reduction is here at the end of northeast Amanda Lane. Previously, there were two cul-de-sac lots proposed. Those have been removed due to the topography, which on the PRO amended, on the amended plan on the screen, you can tell the topography just based on the significant number of line, the contour lines that are on there to get a sense of the steepness of the elevations in that location, and that is what they are trying to avoid. And in doing so, they, by removing those two lots, are able to shift the trail that was proposed further to the west, taking that a little bit closer to the rear property lines, but still remaining in the tract. Previously, that tract actually went closer to the south property line and then straight due north along the east property line around the detention pond, so this does provide a little bit, a slightly shorter trail network, but a little bit more curvilinear in nature, and also does take it away from the steep slope, which would create some topography challenges there. The other item that is, a couple items that are proposed to be amended by this, when the original concept plan was approved, there was proposed to be a trail along the entire west boundary as part of the 2016 changes, and I think it was confirmed as part of the 2020 concept plan amendment, the trail that was along the west property line was removed, with the exception of a small remnant piece that would have been here in track A. But again, you can see the steep topography there, and so the applicant has determined that it's really difficult to install that trail without remove, without significant grading, as well as the removal of mature trees in that location. They would like to preserve all of that and instead provide kind of an outdoor seating overlook area here in track B, just to the south of track A. The details of that are provided up at the upper right-hand corner of the plan, which just show a small patio area with a bench and a wall and trellis with landscaping to provide kind of an overlook over the, kind of the valley that's created there on the east side of the golf course. And then also along northeast Viewpoint Drive, which is the main entrance into the first phase, second phase of the subdivision. They're proposing to install a bench and some additional landscaping there at the entryway as an additional enhancement, particularly given that the trail was the only amenity in the first phase. They are providing these additional amenities to compensate for that. All of the other, all of the amenities that are proposed, that have been approved with the concept plan, as well as shown here on the final plan, are required to be installed or financially guaranteed prior to final plat approval of the third plat, which is the remainder of the subdivision. If they are, if they are not installed and financially guaranteed prior to that approval, and they are financially guaranteed, they are required to be completed prior to occupancy of the first house and the third plat. There are no other amendments being made to the approved PRO final plan, and all previous conditions under the concept plan and preliminary plat still stand. Staff does recommend approval of the PRO final plan with five conditions, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Are there any questions by the Commissioners for the staff at this time? I'll recognize Commissioner Peel.
Yes, thank you Chair. Mr. Wright, did this impact any of the green space requirement? I did not see that in part of the documentation, or I must have missed it.
Yeah, I think that was in the staff report. Let me zoom out here. The minimum green space has been met, and that is on page four of the staff report, where I did lay out the each tract letter, what was approved of the concept plan, and then what is being revised here this evening, as well as the changes that were made. So overall, the total green space is actually increasing by a little over an acre.
Thank you Matt, I was looking forward to that. Thank you very much. Thank you Chair.
Very good. And any other questions by the Commissioners for staff at this time? All right, thank you, Mr. Wright. I would now ask if the applicant would like to make any further presentation or be available for questions. I think, Mr. Burton, if you're there, if you could state your name and address?
Dustin Burton. I'm at 1815 McGee Street, Kansas City, Missouri.
All right, very good. Anything in addition you'd like to add to the presentation for this?
No, I don't think so. Matt did a great job like always. You know, this is really just kind of an update to what we submitted about six months ago. You know, there are some topographical challenges, so reducing the two lots on the east side was, I think, was good for getting away from those slopes. And number one, there's a regulated stream that goes through there, so that's kind of the primary driver for those changes. The changes at the northwest corner are kind of similar. That goes down a pretty steep established embankment to a, another established stream, so that what our developer thought would be a better use of dollars rather than trying to make that small connection work, maybe centralize with a kind of a smaller amenity space that's close to the west side, preserve all the trails that are on the east side. That way we've got a small use for the west side, but primarily, you know, that amenity space is going around the east side of the development.
All right, very good. Do the Commissioners have any questions for the applicant? All right, doesn't seem so. Thank you, Mr. Burton. All right. Any other general questions or discussion by the Commissioners ahead of a motion? Commissioner Banks?
It's not really a question, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to comment that I appreciate the preservation of additional green space when a developer's looking at a project and making amendments to it, so thank you very much.
Very good. Any other questions, comments, before we move to a motion? Commissioner Peel?
Yes, thank you Chair. I just wanted to second that, what Commissioner Banks said. I think the saving of the, actually making it greater is wonderful. Just wanted to express that. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Hearing none, I would ask for a motion for the amended PRO final plan. Commissioner Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended planned residential overlay, final plan, PROF-04-21-7732 Adams Point Village, with the five staff conditions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Commissioner Banks. We have a motion, and I'll now recognize Commissioner Honeycutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you Commissioner Honeycutt. We have a motion and a second, and this will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Mitchell Peel?
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Commissioner Stokenberry, aye.
Commissioner Rohr?
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Commissioner Cradoff, aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Commissioner Honeycutt, aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Commissioner Phillips, aye.
Chair Sanderson?
Chair Sanderson, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right. This will be all the testimony heard on this item, so if you'd like to leave the meeting, please do so now. Thank you. All right. This item is, item five is election of officers. So we've got five different positions, and we'll vote on each one, and we'll try to utilize a yea or nay, simple yea or nay vote for each of those. And we'll just walk through each one, so if you have somebody you would like to nominate, we'll ask if you have a nomination for that position, see how many we have, and then go from there as far as how we'll go forward with the vote. But the first item is, I would ask for a nomination for Planning Commission Chair, and do I have any motions or any nominations? So I'll recognize Commissioner Peel first.
Yes Chair, thank you. I nominate Chair Chad Sanderson as the ongoing chairman for the Planning Commission at this time.
All right, thank you Commissioner Peel. I would recognize Commissioner Banks.
I would second that motion.
Okay. So we've got myself nominated. Any other nominations for Planning Commission Chair? Before we, before we move to the formal motion? Okay. Hearing none, I would now ask for a motion for, and do I need Karen to help me with the procedures? Or do I need to like state myself?
All in favor or opposed, and we can go with that.
Okay, all right, so very good. So all in favor of Chair Chad Sanderson continuing as Planning Commission Chair, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, very good.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we'll be asking for nominations for Planning Commission Vice Chair. So if we have some nominations. Commissioner Peel?
Thank you Chair. Yes, I would like to nominate Ashley Hose as continuing as the Vice Chair. She did a wonderful job. So I think she needs to continue. Did you get that?
You were breaking up just a little bit, but I wasn't sure if it was just on my end. Can you, can you repeat, just to clarify?
Sure. I'm nominating Ashley Hose to continue as Vice Chair. She did a wonderful job when you were not available, and I think she needs to continue as Vice Chair. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Peel, any other nominations for Planning Commission Vice Chair? All right, so voting on All right, so voting on Ashley Hose continuing as Planning Commission Vice Chair, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Looks like that passed as well. The next item, or the next nomination will be for Board of Adjustment Liaison. So this is the Planning Commission Liaison of the Board of Adjustments. Do I have any nominations for that position? Commissioner Peel.
Yes, thank you, Chair. For the Board of
Uh, we're breaking up.
Yeah, Commissioner Peel, you're losing the eloquence a little bit.
Okay, let me try it again. I would like to nominate Lakeisha Veal for the Board.
So let me, I'll see back where I think I heard you said you're nominating Lakeisha Veal for position of Board of Adjustments Liaison. Any?
Yes, that is correct, I'm sorry.
Very good. And also recognize Commissioner Banks.
I'm sorry, Chair. I was going to make that nomination, and I'm sorry that I hit it by mistake, but I second that motion.
Very good. Is there any other nominations for Board of Adjustments Liaison? Okay, so voting on Lakeisha Veal as Board of Adjustments Liaison, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Very good. Sounds like that one passed as well. And so the next one is nominations for Board of Adjustment Liaison, or Alternate Liaison, excuse me. And I'll recognize Commissioner Banks for a motion.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Travis Graham for Board of Adjustments Alternate Liaison.
All right, very good. Any other nominations for Board of Adjustment Alternate Liaison? Okay, hearing none, we'll vote on that. All those in favor of Travis Graham for Board of Adjustment Ultimate Liaison, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, very good. Passed as well. And our final one is for nominations for Solid Waste Management Liaison. Any nominations for Solid Waste Management Liaison? Commissioner Banks. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
That was you. Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I saw.
I think Mr. Peel might have, Mr. Peel might have beat me to it, so I'll bet anyway. I'd like to nominate Brian Cradoff for the Solid Waste Management Committee Liaison.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Any other nominations for Solid Waste Management Liaison? All right, so we'll go ahead and vote on Commissioner Brian, 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 Bri, oh my God. Cradoff for Solid Waste Management Liaison, sorry about that. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, very good. And I think that's it on that one. So item six is other business. Mr. Wright, you want to walk us through other business?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start off with the Community Development Monthly Report. We, Derek Bright, one of our associate planners, she put together a new format for us that we are utilizing and will probably continue to revise as needed based on feedback. However, it's more of a comprehensive community development report that we will be providing monthly to the Planning Commission and City Council. So it really is just for building permits and codes activities, but it's similar to the activity report we've been providing for the last year and a half, but it just goes a little bit more detail. For the month of April, we issued 14 single-family permits and seven duplex permits for a total of 28 units. Year-to-date, we've issued 88 units, which is five, an increase of five units from year-to-date last year. And then overall, for permits, we issued 143 permits in April, which is 448 year-to-date, which is up over 100 permits comparatively through last April. So permit numbers continue to increase. And then on signed permits, we issued 13 signed permits in 2021, or in April. Year-to-date, up to 48, which is an increase over 32 from last year at this time. And then 146 new code cases were opened last month. Most of those were in the Public Health, Safety and Welfare Codes, which is generally the nuisance code, which is where most of our code cases are generated from, which include certain property maintenance codes, as well as high weeds and grass, things of that nature. And then for the administrative approvals by the Planning Division, we had two site plans and two minor subdivision plats approved. The first one was a city thrift store at 1201 Northwest Woodchapel Road, which is the end cap there at the northeast corner of Woodchapel and Kings Ridge behind the new Burger King. That is predominantly for a new canopy addition on the south side of the building, but they are also doing a full interior remodel of that end cap. And then Chase Bank ATM, we approved an administrative site plan for a new location out on the edge of the parking lot in front of Hallmark out at Adams Dairy Landing. And then two minor subdivision plats included Title Wave Auto Spa, a minor lot line adjustment, which also helps accommodate the takeback oil change that was recently approved by the Planning Commission and City Council. And then 302, 304 Southwest 16th Street, that was the shifting of a lot line to accommodate a new single-family house, which is just south of 16th and Walnut. So that is the development activity from community development over the past month. And then we will have a meeting on May 24th, on Monday, and that will be our first back-in-person meeting. The applicants and the general public are, may still participate via Teams if they choose to do so, but we hope to see all of the Planning Commissioners in person on Monday, May 24th.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wright. Any other business from the other commissioners? Okay, seeing none, then I would ask for a motion for adjournment. Commissioner Banks.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Chair.
Yep, thank you, Commissioner Banks. I'll recognize Commissioner Honeycutt.
Thank you, Chair. I second that motion.
So we have a motion and we have a second for adjournment. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, thank you, and we are adjourned, so please media hang up by clicking the red phone icon. Thank you and everybody have a good night.